Good morning, I'm going to call this meeting to an end. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the President of the Department of Defense.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to deliver the United States of America into the public relations, one nation, and indivi- individual, and justice for all. This is the United States of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect expression among all the entities.
Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, the approval of the work session agenda. And discussion. Do you all vote in favor?
No.
Moving on to the next item is the county reports. Grand County Commissions and Senate Minority Report.
Mr. Chairman, the vision hours, respectfully submitting my report in May 7, 2019. I'd just like to call attention to the graph that I attached to my report, the special management. Let's just kind of give you an idea of how many individuals that we're having, you know, in special management, that number will change daily. But we do have a step-down process, and I just wanted to kind of keep you informed about our special management. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
No. Would you still ask any questions?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Commissioners. We completed our LGR chip seal projects last week. We should have them all swept off by tomorrow. Now, we'll just have to wait on instructors to get down. We'll get down there, describe the roads, and then we can clean. We started prepping Rosedale Road yesterday. We'll probably be running it all this week, but we'll start doing it on the next week. We'll start doing that big project, starting out another nap, this business, and people done it.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore, a question I saw in the paper, the announcement of chip sealing and shulmer improvement work being done at the Ridge. Mountain View, Skyview, Ridge Road itself. You're looking at me like you're not going to answer my question. Maybe we should get together.
That wasn't the city?
Well, I thought it was from the city, but we two ended the project, so maybe I misread it. If that's correct, it's the city? And I don't know.
I know that they've got the project planned on Ridge Road. I don't know exactly when they're going to start.
All right, I'll go ask them then.
Okay, I am planning, I think, on the resolutions of the week. They're on the agenda for this week. That does include some chip sealing down there that we didn't do when they were doing the water.
Right, and we put it off?
Yeah.
That was actually my question, was this what we put off two years ago?
Yes, as far as going on the county maintenance.
Okay, all right. That was why I was asking the first question, is if it's what we put off, then it does not include the white. I've already mentioned that to you. I still want to see Ridge Road, be a full standard, 12 feet per lane.
Okay. We're all working on that.
All right, okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, the Chairman, Members of the Board. Just talked a little bit about wildfires. We've got several burning in the Eva, not really in Grant County, mostly in Sierra County, and there's one in Catterton County. The biggest one is a fire, probably a little over 2,000 acres right now. But again, there is prescribed burn in Alpasture, in the U.S. area, as long as they're burning in Grant County, but that's prescribed burn. They also did a prescribed burn in Cannon Creek, which was more before there. It's about 900 acres, that's been mapped out. With the fires going on, that's up to fuel, fails for us at the Air Force, so we're working. They're usually out there trying to make sure that aviation fires build up. So they do have a Type 6 Columbia helicopters, which is a bunker drop. They have two seats, which are a prop, head duster, planes that they drop, stretching down. There's a helicopter stress, which is a medical helicopter they have as well. Repairing team is there now too. We're asking what that is. It's the first time I have heard about the repair team, but they've got their airplane there along the field. And then, of course, the jumpers are there now, but they're on that spring fire, so they'll be coming in now. I am ramping up the wildfire risk reduction grant program for education. We're going to do a complete media blitz that we should plan, working on things to get some print media, also radio ads, social media, and stuff like that, to try to ramp up to Grand County. And with the education being everywhere in high-risk counties, of course, it's going nowhere in the high-risk area. Again, on the volunteer side, we did have a structured fire Saturday, which was in the US town. We had a manufactured home that pretty much was abandoned, but it burned to the ground. So I want to thank Whiskey Creek, the agency on that, along with Foremere, tied along with Fannery, and well, set us a system from Sun Care and City, so I'll get those agents as well for current companies. Cora Caminos will be working earlier this week. $2 ground trip from the conference center. I think that we worked with State Police and Sheriff's Department, kind of just making sure that we keep as less traffic in that area as possible. So we've been doing this for probably over 20 years now, having it throughout, so I'm going to intervention center, so I want people to know, both from a convention center to the road down, so then back, versus two dollars, so that's a perfect track. The Trump Parks is continuing to be doing maintenance on that, working on areas of grasses and the back holes are putting some sprinkler systems in there to keep that game going as best we can. Other than that, if you have any questions, that's all I have.
Any questions?
Mr. Reyes, you're in charge of Cora Caminos?
I oversee the director of Cora Caminos.
Okay, and this is for my education. Cora Caminos, are those employees or are common employees? Because I know the funding is limited.
Yes, yes, sir, they are.
Okay, that's all.
Randy, last week, sometime, I was up in at the Trump Park with Representative Dell, and I want to talk to Sergeant a little bit about it, as far as the weeds. Are we planning something before they get out of hand?
Yes, yes, sir, yes, Mr. Chairman, we're working on that. We're getting the weeds as best we can now.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Just going off my weekly report, so for the Phase Two on the Old Jail, the ground fields, some funding got announced that the New Mexico Environment Department and the COGS did receive some federal funding, so that is good for us, because we were one of the list for the Phase Two on that, so that's going to help us move that forward on the ground fields. National Park Service, I'm not going to hit much on this, other than the presentation will be at the regular meeting on Thursday from the National Park Service from that qualitative survey. Infrastructure capital improvement plan, I do have a draft ICIP that I hope to get out this week, so you guys can just start looking it over, because we're going to get moving a little bit faster on that as we get closer to July meetings to get everything prioritized. So if there's anything else that I miss, which happens quite a bit, let me know, and I'll make sure to get it on there. I'm going to send the draft to you. The Whiskey Creek Volunteer Fire Department, the metal building on Thursday last week before I left for the weekend, it was almost completely erected, so that is back on track and moving forward. The sewer's complete on that, and so that's part of the Rosedale Road colonist project. We're going to have the kickoff meeting, I think, is scheduled for this Friday, so we can get started on that. I know Earl's talked a little bit about what he's already doing down there, so we'll get that project moving on Rosedale. The Census, we met on June 4th at the Complete Count Committee. Our next meeting is set for July 30th. Paul Doolin is no longer with the Census Bureau, so we had another lady out of Buena Ana that came up and met with us. She's covering it for now, until they can get somebody else hired. Not a big deal. We do have the chairs that decided to step up, is Curtis Clock from the school, Sheila Hudman, and myself, so we call it a tri-chair, but we're going to be kind of running the meetings that way. And then Lori Nomo from Skywise Media is going to help us out with taking minutes. Tyron ADA, the colonists, just trying to get things moving on that. I'm hoping to have the contractor have the bid packets out, and us have this completely bid ready to award by the time we get the funds, usually in that August timeframe. And then, I don't know, we already talked about this, Randy may have hit it, but he received the $15,000, another grant award to continue with the CWPP, so we have to update that every so many years, and Randy and I applied. That's part of the same funding that he's just finishing up with the education on fire, so the CWPP is the County Wildfire Protection Plan. So we received $15,000 to update that. That's my report. There's any questions?
Thanks, Misha. The CWPP, that is the plan on what we're going to do in case of a threatened wildfire, and is updated every, how often?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's not necessarily that. It's a report of where Grand County stands as far as high-risk areas, but it does have a lot of information, though you're right, as far as emergencies and where to go, but it's basically an overview of Grand County, where our high-risk areas are, where our resources are, where we see mitigation, and that's the reason why I like to, it's an open document, as this is the working document to kind of get feedback from the public. Very hard, I mean, we didn't get much feedback, because there hasn't been really a major fire that's affected people at that point, and you know, people are really interested, sad to say that, but it does have all the information as far as where our high-risk areas are, what we do, emergencies, and how many agencies play a role in it, so if you look at all the signatures on there, every fire you can see is included in the document. And so is every fire here that has to be updated?
And so one of the things we could get out of that report is if we needed more work on wildfire interfaces in populated areas, that helps that.
That is correct.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any other county reports? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, purpose of public input. The general purpose of the county board session is to inform the Grand County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with Commissioners in regards to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grand County Resolution Number AR-19-01, we welcome public input limited to agenda items only, and will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Do we have anybody for public input? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you. Next item is presentation of reports. Hila Regional Medical Center reports, Kathy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you so much for this opportunity to meet with you today. I brought some people that I really wanted to introduce to you, because I've been talking about them for quite some time. And the first one I would like to present to you is Dr. Butch Roster, our new surgeon. Butch Roster.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. God bless you all, and all the great work and the service you do for this county. A lot of people who look at my profile and the global impact I've had, they say, what are you doing here in this beautiful community? I held court at Daylight Donuts today, met a lot of the folk, and I'm going to tell you the story I told. All of my life, I may have had a high profile, but I was born in Morehead, Mississippi, in the Mississippi Delta, with 2,500. Always wanted to be a small-town doctor, that knew when the calves were born, and how the chickens were doing, and how your grandson was doing in school. You know how life is, it can take you different places. And now that I've had those five children, and they've all been educating, they're out of the house, I can do what I want. And I chose to come here, this great community. My wife and I love the High Mountains, and I really want to be of service the rest of my career. And all over the world, the people have heard me lecture, I've talked about, small communities need to have cutting-edge medical choices. You shouldn't have to leave home to have good care. And I'm going to do my best to really thank you, Ms. Kathy, for giving me a chance for fulfilling a boyhood dream. God bless you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Roster, and we're thrilled to have you here. Our next doctor is our new pediatrician, Dr. Andre Gora.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I want to just say it's a pleasure and honor to be here this morning to speak with you. Just giving you a bit of background on myself. This is actually my third stint in your great state of New Mexico. I came here about eight years ago and worked with the Indian Health Service, Northern Navajo, and you, the Northern Navajo Medical Center, actually is where I met my wife. And then we, I took on a trip. We went for the last seven years, we went through working with other Indian Health Services in the north, Dakota, Oklahoma. And then they moved me up to Fairmax, Alaska, to move with the U.S. military. So I had the great pleasure of serving as a civilian constructor, serving the military at a basic Air Force, a basic RV base, I'm also a pilot. And then my wife, after we moved to the state of Tennessee, when it came time for us to move again, she said to me, you moved young enough. It's time for us to go back to New Mexico. Because she happens to be the caregiver for my two in-laws. My father-in-law is 91, my mother-in-law is 84, and she's been primary caregiver, so wherever I've moved her, she's had to fly back and take care of family business. So here we are, in the great state of New Mexico. I am thankful to everyone who has been instrumental in bringing me here, and like my colleague, Dr. Roster. I was born in a small community, the island of Barbados, I think Caribbean. So I too love the honor of serving small communities. I've served in coffee polo, I've served in rural communities that served along the Amish, Mennonite, Native American, Hispanic, Americans. Like I said earlier, I was a civilian contractor with the U.S. military. I have a great deal of respect for military, and all that they are coming, going through, all the sacrifices that they have been asked. And I know that we, living in rural, regular, rural, a lot of sacrifices as well, we may not have the benefits of the high tech that you have in the coffee polo areas, but as my colleagues said, there's no reason why you should have to leave here and go elsewhere to have cutting-edge medical care. I pledge with your support to give all my very, 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 very best. Thankful again to Hila Regional Medical Center, and all the kind people there, the wonderful reception, bringing me to serve among this population here. My wife and my aunt is a volunteer. She's volunteered with prison ministry, she's a substance abuse counselor, and we are looking to get after her, plug in here as well, as well, too. I visited a few of your fine churches in this community, and we're looking to find a church home. So if any of you have a recommendation, they're happy, letting a listener, a listener here. Again, thanks to you all for the kind and work that you do. Many, many times, people who serve in public service do not get the praise that is deserved. Thank you, and one last. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I would like permission to come up and shake your hands for our sir. Thank you so much.
Also, formal.
Pleasure.
Welcome, welcome to my community. Welcome back to New Mexico.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. May God bless you all.
Thank you so much, physicians, for coming to our community. I think that this was a very special time for us, and I think it's a time to rejoice. And then the next person I'd like to introduce is Dr. Renny Masca. Renny is the practice administrator for all of our clinics, so I'd just like for him to kind of just say a few words.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's such a pleasure to be here. I'm, I think the common message that you're hearing is it's all about service. Well, my career began many moons ago here in Grand County at Hillcrest Hospital, and so now it's time for me to give back to our community, and to serve in this capacity as physician practice administrator. And our goal is to provide services to our community here in Grand County. Not those that already have a medical home, but those folks who are leaving our county to go and receive care in other parts of the state or neighboring states. So we want to offer choices of multi-specialties and services and programs. So again, it's all about service, and I'm so honored to be part of this. Thank you. Once I graduated from nursing school at the University of Arizona, I came back and worked as a flight nurse and ICU nurse for two years, and then I went on to become a nurse anesthetist. After several years of being an anesthetist, I became a practice administrator for a large network of surgery centers. And so eventually, I went into administration and worked in the managed care organization, and then went on to work for CMS as an auditor to make sure that the Medicaid and the Medicare populations were receiving the care and access to care that they should receive. So I came back from Hawaii to come take care of my parents, and I fell in love all over again with this awesome community. And I hadn't planned on staying, but I got booked, and here I am.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Ms. Max.
I think one of the things that I would like to ask of all the Commissioners is that from time to time, at least one of you come to our board meeting. Our last board meeting, we changed it around a little bit, instead of my talking about things, I brought directors that have responsibilities for these departments, so they could really share what they were doing with all of the participants. I think it was a great success, because you get to hear the heart and soul of the people that are really working in our organization. And these people have great responsibilities, as you can imagine. I can give you bullet points, but they are really the ones that are there day in and day out, and they're the heart and soul of our hospital. They work with the men and women on a daily basis, 24/7. They're always there, and they're totally committed to improving the health care of our community, and working with other agencies to make sure that that does happen. So instead of going into a lot of rhetoric, which I have so known to do at these meetings, I'll just open it up for any questions that you have.
Any questions?
I would say that I appreciate the invitation. I think it's a great idea that you're having directors be important, for Harry to live, and congratulate you on Dr. Roster and Dr. Gora.
Just to add to that, we also acquired another family practice physician from Maine, and she should be starting in about three months also, once she retains her presence. So I'll turn this over to Richard.
Hey, good morning. So this is the financial report for the month of April, which is 10 months into our fiscal year. So in a nutshell, for the month of April, the system generated a $60,000 profit, which brought our year-to-date profit to $85,333. EBITDA for a year-to-date wise, we've spun off $2.44 million in cash flow. And if you take a look at the year-to-date 2018, you see we had $4.5 million. But that was, the month of April of last year, we received a $4 million, roughly $4 million, say to make careful payment in that month, and that's what generated that wide variance. Our cash collection percentages still currently remains at 30%. Our net, our cash to net revenue collection for April was 124%. I believe this month is going to be around 132%, so we're continuing to catch up on the collections of some of the older accounts. As I believe I may have reported last month, that we have filed and have been notified that for fiscal year '15 and '16, we were going to receive approximately slightly over $2.4 million. A couple of weeks ago, we did receive formal notification from CMS dated May 15th to that effect. So CMS has 60 days to reopen the cost report, implement the changes, and issue the check. So we're looking forward to receive that cash sometime in July. We've also submitted the 2017 declining volume request, and I should be able, if I have time today, to finish the 2018 request, so we'll be fully caught up on that. Another big project we've been working on, and we've discussed this in the past, is the transfer DRG project. So the vendor has received all the data, and is culling through the data now, so we expect to see some action on that, you know, this month, first part of July. We did present our operating capital budget to the board, this past board meeting, and it was approved and had been submitted to the state. We have hired a new controller for the system, Jennifer Clocks. Jennifer comes to us from West Virginia, from a hospital in West Virginia. Jennifer spent, a part of her childhood, her parents were, her father was in the military, so she spent a part of her childhood in Las Vegas, Nevada. So she, when I was interviewing her, she said, you know, I've had enough of the heat and humidity of West Virginia, I'm ready to come back to something I like better. So she landed last week, and is hitting the ground running very hard. So on page two of the report, you can see the volumes of charges, but I do want to comment on our days cash on hand at the end of April was 31.5 days. Our days in net AR is 44.6, and our days in accounts payable is 20.5. Today, our days cash on hand is 28, up a little bit from yesterday. So we, you know, we're continuing to modify how we manage our accounts payable, and of course, we've put a lot of effort into our AR over the last year. So now we're turning our attention to AP, and how do we properly manage that? So that process is coming along nicely, as you would expect when you look at a particular area, to the spite to find some areas of improvement, and we have, and we are. So again, our year-to-date profit stands at $85,333. Is there any questions?
Yeah, so explain to us about the days of cash on hand. We know recently, and I appreciate the weekly report we're getting from the Chair and the Word of Justice, and the heads-up, the detailed heads-up that we got from him. If you could explain to us about the days of cash on hand, how that got, maybe how that got away from you, or how it didn't, that seemed like it got away to... how that got away from you or how it didn't, that seemed, seemed like it got away to, to me and some of us maybe. And, uh, seems like we're going back up to 28 is a good improvement, one over yesterday and seems like it. But what was it? So could you just, uh, give us a detailed explanation of all that?
So, you know, days cash on hand, depending on the time that you look at it, it's just like looking at an EKG, it's going to go up and down, up and down, up and down. Now, when this first hit, uh, we had, we had just completed the third payroll. We have two months of the year where we have three payrolls in a calendar month. So we had just hit, uh, the, the third payroll in April. I mean, May, I mean, May, yeah.
I have to help him with finance once in a while.
So, you know, anytime you have, you know, you have those kind of days, uh, those kind of events, it's going to drive like, uh, payroll this week is Wednesday, Thursday, uh, cash on hand is going to drop five days. That, that's just how it works. So one thing that, as I stated earlier, how we manage our accounts payable, because the way I calculated it, uh, this past month was, you know, we're at 20 days, that's absurdly low. So we're going to be managing how we pay our vendors, uh, and, and be more realistic in hitting the due dates instead of, uh, well, we had lots of areas of improvements there, so, uh, but, but that's, that's really kind of it. Now, what we were, what we were doing in the past also was we would accelerate our accounts, uh, payments, uh, at the beginning of the month. Uh, so we would have big accounts payables at the beginning of the month and it would trail out to the end of the month. Now what we're doing is we're taking a set amount of dollars and we're paying every Friday, we standardize our AP day, the Fridays, and we're going to spend about the same amount every Friday instead of, you know, way upfront and let it trail. So the, uh, they don't know how you manage your vendors.
Can you tell me, you know, so I see in 2018, your, your AP was 56 days out compared to at the end of April, 20 days out, so that's, uh, 36 days? I should be able to figure this out. How much is a, uh, a day of AP?
Well, a day of expenses, $190,000, so AP is less than that and I'd have to kind of have to pay like that much ability.
Okay, so I wouldn't be able to figure that. Okay, well, that gives me a rough idea then of what you're talking about. So you've replaced, you're paying your bills on time. That, I'm trying to put this simply where I can understand. So you're paying your bills quicker and on time and so that's taken a bite out of your cash.
Well, yes and no. We were, we were paying some vendors really quick and we were paying some vendors not so quick. Uh, so the process that we put in place is to put all the vendors on equal footing and depending on the due date of the invoice, that's how we determine what we're going to pay and when we're going to pay it. So for instance, uh, you know, uh, I'd like to stay somewhere between 30 and 40 days, um, uh, in, in AP. HCA, I think, has, they run their operation at 45 days. Uh, so, you know, and, and, and a lot of the for-profit stretch it out between 45 and 60 days, you know, but my goal is to keep it somewhere between 30 and 40 days.
No, he, he answered the question that I had.
Well, just as I take you first cut, because I can't resist, um, trying to figure this out, your AP is basically everything, all your expenditures except your payroll, right?
Pretty much, yes, sir.
Just as, you know, we're going to, and do you have a sense of what percentage of your expenses are payroll?
Uh, about 55% of our expenses is payroll.
So, uh, days AP would be less than half of days of cash.
Yes, so probably about 30% of our expenditures were related to AP and the rest being employee benefits and insurance and stuff like that, which are still kind of run through the AP system.
So roughly three days of AP reduction is one day of operating expense reduction.
I can't calculate it like that.
That sounds about right to me, Mr. Phil. They drop AP by 21 days, they spend seven days of cash rustling, right? It's all extremely rough.
Yeah, about three to one, yeah, extremely rough.
Right.
All right, thanks.
You know, for me, it's a really interesting, it's, it's great to have this one after the board, but, you know, I will ask that maybe, uh, next time you need, I'd like to see where you're at. You know, I've seen some of those strategic plan numbers go together, I'd like to see or get a report exactly, you know, where you're at and, and what's being done with that.
Yes, sir, I can give you an update on two major initiatives within the strategic plan underneath my umbrella, I can give you an update right now on that.
That's fine.
So I want, I want you to understand also that, you know, uh, six, two months ago, we, you know, we, we were informed that we're not going to get the $9 million we expected. Uh, you know, that's just a reality. Uh, we, we have so far been unsuccessful in getting any relief from that. Having said that, you know, there were decisions made, uh, that, that, you know, hindsight is pretty doggone clear. So there were some decisions made we may not have made having known this, that did have an impact on cash flow, so we're dealing with that now. Now, obviously, we didn't go completely, uh, without abandon. I mean, we, we were, we were trying to be conservative in the, in the endeavors we did undertake. So having said that, so we got, we, you know, we really have to deal with, you know, the, the loss of 9 million, so, uh, you know, we are dealing with that. Uh, now, the two major projects under, on the strategic plan had to deal with converting our primary care practice sites to a rural health clinic. That project is, we have contracted with the company to, to provide guidance on that process because it is a process. We have received, uh, notification from the, uh, licensing department of New Mexico Health, telling us to proceed, so we're on that road. We've met with the vendor, uh, most, several times now. We have submitted all the data necessary that they've requested. Uh, in fact, I believe we had a 48-hour turnaround on all the data requests. So that project is starting to get some steam underneath it. The big, the big thing about that particular project is not only are they, are they providing us a roadmap to follow, but it's a roadmap that we can duplicate as we, uh, as we open additional primary care sites. Uh, you know, and primary care is, you know, has a fairly broad definition. It's not just family practice, but, you know, it's also other types of practices like, uh, I believe psychiatry is also, but I'll have to check on that. Uh, and that's one of our questions, to make sure we get a good list of, of what qualifies for rural health clinic. So we're moving down that road. Uh, we've also contracted with a group to provide guidance on a critical access conversion and this is an important update on that. So we, we've had our first meeting, they've, they've asked us for some data, we have submitted the data, uh, we've given them access to all of our cost report records from our cost report preparer. So we are, we are moving down on, uh, what we call phase one and that is the, that's an analysis of, of, of the appropriateness of converting to critical access and the pros and the cons. Now, one thing that, that I quite frankly just forgot, uh, that they brought my attention again. You know, at some point, we, we were talking about the need to have $5 million in, in the bank to do this conversion. Now, during our, uh, our, our initial conversation, I posed all these questions to them and then our second conversation, they said, well, there, there is a, that you do have the ability to continue billing through the critical access designation phase, which is probably what we would do if the board decides to go down that road. So what we will have to, what we can do, what they'll allow us to do is to, is to continue billing under our current Medicare provider number. And once the critical access designation becomes effective, then we will have to, uh, reverse all those bills that we sent from, from, from the, uh, effective date of the critical access designation to current. And then we'll have to rebuild it under the new critical access number. So, you know, so I was speaking to someone else in the hospital yesterday, I believe, they said, you know, isn't that kind of bad that you have to reverse and rebuild? I said, no, it, it's not really. One, the physical intermediary, Novitops, will be aware that's what we're doing because we're going to tell them that's what we're doing. Second of all, all hospitals across the United States cancels bills and resubmits them, so it's nothing unusual. Uh, but, but it does require a right bit of work on our end to, to accomplish that. So, uh, you know, we're well on, on the road to both of those major projects. Now, again, I'd like to, uh, remind everyone here, especially the press, that critical access is basically a reimbursement methodology for small hospitals in rural areas. And that, that, that was, that will be the deciding point, is what, what is the critical point that we have to be concerned with? Uh, and it's really is just a, for our purposes, simply a reimbursement system. Now, there is some impact on the Medicare beneficiaries that we're aware of, that we've had discussions about. Uh, we are addressing those and we, we have, we have already started addressing those issues to mitigate that impact. So that's kind of a brief update on where we are with two major projects. And I know we'll be, uh, and I don't want to speak for Mr. Taffey, but I know we'll be having an update to our board on where we at on the strategic plan in the winter start and then we'll see you guys.
Any questions?
Yeah, I feel like I may have missed something. Uh, you alluded to your previous estimate that you need roughly $5 million to weather the roughly three-month billing gap and then you explained how it's normal to cancel bills and resubmit bills.
Yep, yep.
I guess I expect another shoe to drop and it, it's me to find out, oh, no, you don't need 5 million or it's not going to be a three-month gap. Did any of those things change?
Well, if I continue to bill, the cash flow will still continue. There will be a short gap in cash as we cancel bills.
And resubmit.
Yeah, we cancel and then resubmit, there'll be a gap, there'll be a window there.
But that's a month, not three months.
Yep, correct.
So we're looking at less than 2 million now.
Yes, sir.
Working capital, you mean?
Yes, sir.
That's great, isn't it? Thank you.
So what about the fact that there's been some discussion in, in the, um, healthcare, like modern healthcare and those sort of publications about, um, the fact that funding for critical access is potentially shaky? So what if, what if you go through, and maybe, let me just back up one step. So when you go through, so you're currently licensed as a 68-bed hospital, correct?
Correct.
And once you go through the, the, um, critical access process, then that changes your licensure?
It will.
Is that true?
Yes, ma'am.
And so if then critical access, the, the funding that makes critical access work, the federal funding that makes that work goes away, then... Is, is there a point in time where you would need to consider relicensing at a higher? How will that affect your long-term, you know, licensing strategy against what I'm asking? And then there's maybe a second part of this question that you could answer at the same time and that is, it's my understanding that in the number of beds that critical access requires, that that does not count, um, uh, chef's lost the word.
Another behavior.
Oh, B, thank you. And, and behavioral health.
Okay, so, okay. All right, so let's talk about the funding first. So critical access status has been around for probably 20 years and, uh, for almost 20 years, there've been discussions about, you know, what if critical access, access funding goes away? You know, there are some initiatives in Congress, uh, even today and have been for every year to, to actually increase the funding levels for critical access hospitals because, uh, you know, there, if you look at the hospitals across the United States that have closed, a fair number of them are critical access hospitals. And there's a reason for that, we won't go into all that today, but, but, but you need to understand if you don't manage, if you don't manage the cost structure in a critical access hospital, you will get crushed. Now, having said that, you know, uh, you know, Dan over here is FQHC and they receive federal grant funds. Uh, during the Obama administration, there was a massive expansion in funding for, uh, community health centers. Uh, that will not continue most likely at the level that it's been. I don't know and I don't really follow it. I don't, I don't know if there's any, Dan says it's going up so good. Uh, so, you know, idiot, as all, everyone in this room knows, any, anytime you rely on the government, government for anything, it's subject to change depending on how the wind's blowing at the state Capitol or the, or Washington DC. So all we can do is, you know, look, look with best available information, look ahead to anticipate some changes. I don't, I don't personally anticipate massive changes through the critical access rule. They might announce something tomorrow that I'm not aware of. But if I felt, if I, if I personally felt that, uh, it was, that was a risky move, I, I would so advise the board and Mr. Taffey of that. Uh, as far as the bed licenses, so, uh, you know, we are licensed for 68 beds under critical access, uh, we will move that down to 25. I think in the past year, there's been two days where we've actually passed the 25-bed mark for acute care patients. Now, behavioral health unit is what they call a TEPRA unit, which is, uh, uh, separate, it's almost like a entity within the hospital, so it stands on its own. Uh, those beds will be, we will have the 25 beds and the 10-bed behavioral health unit. Now, there's some questions on the state level on how they're going to look at these TEPRA beds and we're, we're in the process of discussing with the Department of Health. We've already posed the question, uh, how would they view that for purposes of safety net care pool calculations, because that's going to make a difference. So, uh, Russell Toll has been, we've posed the question to him and for his point, he knows us, he knows we're going to formally ask in the very near future. As far as OB, OB is part of the hospital. It is included in the 25 bed. The nurseries are never counted for, for any, for the cost report or, or the safety net care pool, nurseries never count, but the moms stay.
The moms count if the babies go.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um... Going back to the safety net care pool question then, your question, Mr. Toll, then, has to do with the fact that are there going to be 30 beds and under or 30 beds and over?
Yeah, 25 bed or it'll be.
So the cutoff for the safety net care pool is 30 and so are your 10 BHU beds going to put you over that limit? That's your question.
That is the question, yes, ma'am.
I want to just go backward for just one second, um, the rural healthcare clinic, is that a federal designation or a state?
It's, uh, actually, it's a federal designation that the state follows on to.
So the decision will be made at the state level?
It will be made by the Department of Health on behalf of CMS.
Okay, thank you.
So also...
Department of Health or Health and Human Services, I'm sorry?
Yes. You know, I used to call them Health and Human Services and that's a big umbrella over all of it, so, um, I'm not, I'm not sure if anybody else follows that same, I don't think it's always clear. But, but there is something really critical here that we need to understand, uh, you know, so under the, under the rural health planning designation, there's two main areas you, we need to give consideration to. One is... One is to be classified as provider-based, and there's some implications of that. That means it's a department of the hospital versus freestanding. So that's a consideration that we're, that we need to explore and have a full understanding. The second is, there's an exception in the Medicare regulations that allow hospitals under 50 beds to become cost-based reimbursed. Now, the 2018 cost report, we reported, I think it was 43 available beds. So we're under the threshold, so whether we're freestanding rural health center or we're a provider-based rural health center, they will be cost-based. And so as we, as I said earlier, how you manage cost within a critical access is just as important to manage the cost and how you drive cost to a critical access department of the hospital. So we are putting processes in place now to make sure we're sending all of our direct costs to those cost centers, which today we are not. But by the time July 1 gets here, we will.
Any other questions?
Yes. Where does the Bear Clinic stand? Because I live in Bear, and I haven't seen any activity there.
I'll answer that for you. We really have been working on this. We had a community member in Bear come to us with an alternative site, and so we're looking at that. We have an architect that came down this week, and he's looking at that space too, so we can proceed. Also, the city of Bear has approached us regarding some property that they have, that they would like for us to look at, and so we will be meeting with them just in case we need an alternative site. So as we get closer and closer, we're giving a call from the architect. On this one location, I'll bring that back to the commissioners.
So the current clinic isn't viable?
No, it is not. It is not. It was going to cost almost $350,000 to get it to where it needed to be. So actually, this was a blessing in disguise that we started to reliving it, and somebody said, you know, that we shouldn't be doing that without certain permits. And so that's where we're at right now. But it would have been a danger of the past renters, and it's a good thing that we found out.
Okay. Well, and I have another question. It comes completely out of left field, and I think I read this in the paper, or the media or something, about the board considering going away from being a condominium hospital to a 503C. And now, is that possible, and what would that mean?
There was one member that brought that up in open discussion last board member, one meeting, and it was just a... When you come to our meetings, you'll say that there is a time where each one of the board trustee members has a commentary that they want to share, and it's really no discussion with it, it's just a comment. And so one of the board trustees just mentioned that. Now, what it would take, it would take, I'm not quite sure what it would take. We haven't looked at that, and hadn't had need to, but I can report back to you next time, because we were going to investigate it, just so everybody knows what that would take. But it would have to take approval of the committee, I'm sure.
But is that a possibility?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add one more thing. I forgot to let you know this, that we have hired a new chief nursing officer. Her name is Rose Locas, and she will be starting the 20th of this month. Her husband is also a nurse, and he's coming down for an interview this week to see what position we have that he would be interested in. Any other questions?
That's it? Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
One other thing, I am so sorry, I forgot this. We have an issue that we're working, we should link with, regarding some payments that we submitted, which I guess were late payments. And as you know, we have always told you that we're working on getting these bills out more timely, but there were several bills that missed, I guess, but are some contractual agreement that we have regarding the prisoners and services rendered to them. And because we were, missed this threshold, the claims were denied. So we're going to appeal this because they are services rendered, and knowing that the county is a partner with us, we would sure appreciate some latitude on this because it was a minimal over $7,000. And this means a lot to our community to get paid, or our hospital to get paid. So I know Richard is going to be working shortly on this, on an appeal, to see if we can recoup all of that.
And then, you know, your processes as far as the field, you know, what we moved up, you know, certain policies, and being billed for inmates that weren't housed, that didn't vote, that weren't, or getting billed for people that weren't inmates to get housing contention. So, I mean, you have to understand where this is for a customer.
Absolutely, absolutely. And if that is the case, with $73,000, I would certainly want to look at that and how we're collecting that information, because that's not quite... I can see it happened once, maybe twice, but $73,000 or more, I'm glad that completely happened, but we're going to be looking at it. We're going to look here.
And I don't believe this has been the first time this has happened, but I think this, the board of commissioners have really looked at it, and, you know, the decision was made by the board of commissioners not to pay these bills, and it was just our direction toward county manager. So just so you understand, you know, that's our direction we took, but I can think you do have an appeal process, and I'm sure when it comes to us, we will take that into consideration.
Thank you, thank you so much. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Go to the...
Still under presentation reports, Hidalgo Medical Services, update, Mr. Oder. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners and County Manager and County Staff. Good morning, and thank you once again for giving me the opportunity to share some updates regarding the medical services. At the pleasure of the Commission, I did invite Dr. Nelson and Dr. Bowen to provide some more, not necessarily longer, but let's just say more comprehensive updates regarding what's going on on the medical side, as well as behavioral health. But prior to doing that, I'd like to just clarify one thing. I have some high-level data I want to provide, and then I want to do a clarification regarding our FQHC status as well. I may have shared this with you all before. HMS has been in this community since 1995, started in Hidalgo County, and started off, obviously, once it received its FQHC status, there was one individual and an administrative assistant, and now we're up to almost 250 employees. And the reason I bring that up is because we've been working really hard to serve both communities in any way that's possible and viable from a business model standpoint. As a matter of fact, one of the requirements of a federally qualified health center is to do a needs assessment every other year, to find out where the gaps in services are in the community, and then it's our responsibility to do business performance to determine if we can fill that void. So we take a lot of pride in doing that, and I think that's what's led to our growth as an organization, is to dive into that, find out what a community really needs to be a viable community, not only from the health, healthcare side of the equation, but also from just a general economics and general quality of life in our communities. One of the strategies that we've employed about three years ago to do that better is our pursuit of the Malcolm Baldrige Award, and I'm sure most of you have heard of that. The Malcolm Baldrige Award is a national quality award that basically guides us through a comprehensive process to look at our systems and our processes and our care delivery models in order to fulfill the needs of our customers. And I bring that up because the state, the state of New Mexico, has that initial methodology that we use to get us to the national level. And there's four levels at the state to get us to the national level. At the state is the Adobe, Pino, Roadrunner, and ZIA. And when an organization fulfills the ZIA level of recognition, that's when we would apply for the National Malcolm Baldrige Award, which is a presidential award. And I just, I'm bringing that up to share just quickly with you that we have received the Adobe and the Pino Award, and we are now going to be submitting our Roadrunner Award here in the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we'll also get recognized for that, so we can begin working on our next phase of excellence. And when I talk about excellence, there's two metrics that I continue to share with you that we're quite proud of. There's 15 measures, UDS measures, that HERSA, the governing agency for our organization, requires us to report, and all 1,500 approximate FQHCs around the country report those same measures, both at the state level as well as at the federal level. And HMS is continually getting better and better on better quality outcomes, and we're exceeding the state at 10 of 14 measures here in New Mexico as compared to the other 16 FQHCs, and 10 of 14 at the national level. And when I said 10 of 14 at the state level, they just changed one of our measures, and so that 10 is now going to shift back down to a 9 because it's a brand-new measure. They rewrote the operational definitions of that. But the key point again is, we've made great progress in our quality scores, which means that our patients are receiving better clinical care overall. The other key metric that I like to share with you is our patient satisfaction. We measure the satisfaction of those that come to us for services in all of our service lines, to make sure that we're meeting what we call the experience of care. Are you getting high quality, and are you satisfied with the way you're treated, the courtesy, the timeliness of your visit, the information provided by the doctors and therapists and clinicians? And we are at 93% satisfied continuously. Now, we'll continue to work, and the higher the better, obviously, but in healthcare, that's really good. That's a really good satisfaction score. The other thing when I'm talking about community and community support, and since Dr. Nelson's going to step up and give a brief update, as well as Dr. Bowen, I want to talk about kind of that unforeseen, the services that happen in the background, and you've all heard of them, because we talk about our services now as medical, dental, behavioral health, family support, senior services, and now care coordination, and of course, our residency program. But family support, I just want to provide a little bit of data, because I think it's really powerful. HERSA requires us to provide what's called enabling services, and we've expanded that definition to be much more than traditional enabling services, which address social determinants of health. We go above and beyond. So for example, like I mentioned, we do provide a sliding fee for patients that don't have insurance, they're uninsured or they're underinsured. And year-to-date, we've enrolled 1,900 individuals onto our sliding fee, so they can receive services. Year-to-date, we've enrolled 425 community members on our Medicaid or New Mexico Health Insurance Exchange. So again, as an enrollment center, we're making sure people that don't have insurance have a way to get enrolled and get that insurance, so they can get the care that they need. We've had 191 community members that didn't have access to food. I'm talking on that, right? Not a big number, but just picture those people in our community, and you think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, and we need to get them in for mental health services or medical services, and they don't even have a meal. Healthcare is not at the top of their list. So again, this is an example where we're trying to fill those voids. We've had 193 individuals who've come in to get their utilities, get support to pay their utilities. I remember going way back in the day when Commissioner Ponche and I were on the streets, he was working as an officer, and I was working as a paramedic, and we would go to people's homes, and they have no heat, and these are elderly individuals. And they're extremely sick, or they're hypothermic, and they have to be taken to the ER. So these are basic needs that we're trying to help fulfill in our community, and I just really want to stress that. We also helped 135 individuals complete their application for social security disability, for example. So family support does a whole lot more than getting people enrolled in insurance, getting access. We're trying to meet those daily social determinants of health needs as well. And then just quickly, I want to give you an updated stats on our senior center program. We're having increases in participation from our seniors. Right now, year-to-date, we've had 24,860 congregant meals provided to our seniors, 49,200 home-delivered meals, 7,300 transportation trips. And again, remember, these are transportation to get them to those basic needs like healthcare services. And throughout this year-to-date, we have about 800 seniors taking advantage of our senior center program, which again is a partnership with the county. And it's going very well. And a quick statistic on seniors, we're getting ready to have our, I've talked about, we've received the Freeport Grant to do a study on senior services and needs in the seniors in our community here in that county. The state of New Mexico is moving from being 39th in proportion of older adults, 39th in 2010, to being 4th in 2030. So we have our next advisory committee meeting tonight, and we're starting to see some of the preliminary data that's coming out regarding this extreme challenge that we're all going to be facing in our communities, and the economic impact to that as well. So there's going to be a lot more to come on that. And then I promised that I was going to clarify the comment that HMS as an FQHC is run by federal funds. It is true, but we're supplemented with federal funds to serve the uninsured and the underinsured. In early 2016, we were a $19.5 million organization, with about $3.5 million in federal funds. That's a combination for serving the uninsured and underinsured, as well as our Teaching Health Center grant. But today, we're a $25 million organization, and that growth has been a combination of service expansion and general revenue based on patient care deliveries or traditional payer sources, just like any other healthcare system, in addition to some additional grant funds that we receive, for example, with our care coordination programs. So yes, we do receive federal funds, and as a matter of fact, the more patients that come to HMS for our primary care clinics, to our behavioral health clinics, to our dental clinics, it actually changes the calculation factor at the federal level of how much money comes back into our community. So we're just going to continue to work hard to provide the highest level of quality and service to fulfill the needs of our community and fulfill the requirements of the federal FQHC status. So I'm going to hand back for questions if you have, but I do want to ask Dr. Nelson to come up now and provide just a brief update on medical and residency program.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Dan, for that introduction. I'm going to talk about three things, and I'll keep it short. The residency program, we do have a family medicine residency program here in our great town and county. We will graduate two new family medicine board-certified residents in less than two weeks. Couldn't do this without the support from our community of physicians, without the support from TRMC, and without, of course, the support from our patients who are willing to come and see our residents, and help them learn and make them into great family medicine physicians. On a positive note, one of these graduates, we are retaining here at HMS, and he's committed to serving the senior population, so Dr. Armandettis will be seeing him around a lot more. Secondly, we had a visit from U.S. Representative Torres Small on Saturday, but she came specifically because she's co-sponsoring a bill that would help extend this Teaching Health Center federal funding that we get to train these residents. What that means is, the federal funding for the residency program is about $900,000 a year to train residents in our community. That usually is reauthorized on a two-year cycle. The new bill that Representative Torres Small is sponsoring takes it out to a five-year cycle and also has extra money for expansion. Wouldn't it be great if we had four graduates instead of two each year? It has money for a cost of inflation. It was a very great visit. I could tell that Representative Torres Small was incredibly genuine and took great interest in her district being the host of New Mexico's only Teaching Health Center, not only in the state, but also the only residency program that's not located on the I-25 corridor. It's a pretty cool feather in our cap, I think. And finally, I'm going to talk a little bit about something called medication-assisted treatment. That's a treatment plan that we use to treat patients that have opioid use disorder. It could be heroin addiction, it could be opiate pill addiction, things like that. Back in August 2018, there was one physician in all of Grant County that had a special DEA waiver that allowed them to take care of opioid use disorder patients. Unfortunately, that physician left. HMS stepped up to the table in September of 2018, having one physician take over a lot of the patients that were in the program. We've now grown in 10 short months from one physician with a special DEA waiver to five in our community that can now help patients recover from opioid use disorders. We've got two more in the pipeline, too. So the end of my story is, HMS is adding capacity... So the end of my story is HMS is adding capacity to help our communities deal with this opioid epidemic. Our doors are open, we say no to no one and we will do our very best to help our communities recover and be healthier. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any question? Okay. Dr. Bowen, you want to bring up an update on behavioral health?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Thank you very much for the opportunity to give a real brief update. Excuse me. I'm going to also speak about just three things quickly. The first is, I just want to acknowledge that HMS has stepped up and become a major behavioral health provider in our communities as a result of the Medicaid debacle which occurred in the state in 2013 and then led to the Arizona companies coming in and then leaving our service area. And I mentioned that in part just to point out that on June thirteenth, which I think is Thursday this week, KRWG is going to show a documentary on what happened in New Mexico to the Medicaid behavioral health system called The Shake-Up. And it'll be on, again, on KRWG, I think at 8:00 PM. It's a one-hour documentary and very much with understanding what's happened to our behavioral health system. And I want to underline how much we've done as a state and HMS has contributed significantly to this to build, not just rebuild the existing system before that happened in 2013, but a much better system. We're really aiming at providing an excellent behavioral health system to our communities and our neighbors here in our part of the state as well as statewide. And that's part of why HMS has been so committed to working at the state level because I think this is a system which only works if it works for everybody. You can't have a center of excellence that's outside the rest of the system. So we've been honored to participate in that. And as part of that, we've also become aware of a coming national trend, moving away from the reimbursement system for behavioral health of fee for service, just you see people, the more you see them, the more you get paid, to value-based purchasing. In New Mexico, that's more present on the medical side, it's growing on the behavioral health side, and we've been a leader in helping the state behavioral health system get ready to be successful in value-based purchasing. And I bring that up in part to lead to the main topic I wanted to bring to your attention today, which is TUCASA. Value-based purchasing requires providers of services to be able to demonstrate the quality of what they do. So providing evidence-based therapies, showing the positive outcomes for the people we serve, but also be able to manage costs effectively and keep costs well under control. So many states now have behavioral health provider associations which provide scorecards for individual providers in their state that show on one graph their costs for providing services and the quality measures that they come up. And as Dan mentioned before, HMS, we're at the beginning phases on the behavioral side of having those kinds of dashboards of quality indicators. We're doing very well on the medical side. We're also in a good position to be able to show the quality of what we're doing on the behavioral side. And medication-assisted therapy is one of those, as well as making sure that the prescribing practices of the nurse practitioners and psychiatrists and prescribing psychologists, and we use two of those three groups, are actually meeting the needs of the families and individuals that we serve without putting them at undue risk. The psychotropic medications we use on the behavioral side are among the most dangerous medications out there. And so we're very serious about monitoring the quality of the prescribing practices and that's led to some changes in our prescribing staff because of monitoring that quality. As far as TUCASA, I just wanted to note that you've probably seen in the paper that we did finally receive our Crisis TRIRAS Center licensure. We were the first in the state of New Mexico to receive that licensure. Burnley County now has the second. And that's opened the way for us. We're in a very active recruitment and hiring process to get to the twenty-month staff that we need to be able to open 24/7, which is the design of the facility from the get-go. So I'm glad we'll be able to get there. And you know, there's something called a planning policy in business, which everything takes twice as long as you think it is going to take and we've already exceeded that for TUCASA. So I hesitate to say when we'll go 24/7, but we're well along the path to get there. And I also wanted to point out that the county commission here in Grant County, very generously, when we applied to provide the services at TUCASA, we indicated, I understand this is a Grant County project, but we are a Hidalgo Medical Services, so we'll provide services to residents of Hidalgo County. And the county commission responded saying, of course you will and you should also be able to do Luna County and Katrin County, our historic, you know, catchment area for behavioral health services. And on that note, Luna County CYFD and another agency in Luna County have approached TUCASA about providing transportation from Luna County to TUCASA to obtain these specialized services, including medication-assisted therapy, which we'll start at there next Monday, and the other specialized services. So those are the highlights I wanted to give you today and of course, I'm open for any questions as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
So I don't really have a question. I just wanted to acknowledge how truly fortunate we are to have Dr. Bowen in this community and his commitment to behavioral health. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for Dr. Bowen, could you explain value-based purchasing, which is, you know, what I thought I did for my family, especially in the case of behavioral health. I picture something like an EMO, but I don't know how it works for behavioral health.
There's actually a continuum of value-based purchasing models and wisely, the state of New Mexico has chosen with behavioral health to start at the early end of the continuum. And basically what it says is if you can demonstrate, you know, meeting certain quality measures, for example, that, and this is one we already exceed as HMS, making sure that people who are discharged from hospitals, psychiatric hospitals, or from an emergency department are seen in outpatient treatment within seven days. Our goal is three days and we're doing very well now that we have good access to data about who's being released from the hospitals. And the reason for that particular measure, for example, is most people don't understand that one of the most dangerous periods for someone that is imminently suicidal is immediately after being released from the hospital, either the emergency department or psychiatric hospitalization. So if you can demonstrate meeting that goal, the MCOs will share some savings so you get shared benefit because of that quality measure, not the number of times you see them, but because of the quality of what you delivered. And then as you move up the continuum, you move to where you're sharing risk as well as benefit with the MCOs. So what value-based purchasing is really designed to do is reduce the overall healthcare costs for the overall system while improving the quality and improving the patient care and the experience of the providers as well. It's the quadruple there. And then it goes all the way up to where you get bundled rates for certain things and that will happen at TUCASA for that assisted withdrawal process that we'll do at TUCASA. We are working right now with the state in identifying a model for bundled rate for that so that instead, rather than billing, you know, Medicaid every time the nurse goes and hydrates the person or takes their vitals, we get one rate for the full time that they're in one of our chairs there. And then that can go all the way up to capitation where you get a certain rate for managing the population. And so as you move up that continuum, you know, you get more risk, but you also get the potential for more benefit.
And if we get to the point where using capitation, are we going to be counting the population of neighboring counties because they're part of our country?
That would certainly be part of the complicated calculus. That's correct.
All right. Thank you. I actually had another one. Well, for the end, if I might. You very much raised my curiosity with the demographic information you provided. We're going to move from thirty-ninth to fourth in the span of twenty years in a certain proportion of our state residents who are elderly. And I know this has happened across the country, but I did not realize this happened disproportionately here. And I guess I'm curious, is that strictly due to influx of retirees?
It's a combination of influx retirees and of course, a lot of the baby boers and natural transition of people. I know. Yeah, so there's a combination of things and we're going to be providing in August, actually it'll be early September, we're going to be providing the county commission a report from this research study that we're doing and we'll really start getting into the details of that. But yes, that's the projections moving forward, those numbers that I shared.
So I know our teen residency rate has dropped a lot. I guess I was curious if that was a piece of it too. That statistics are really quite remarkable.
Yeah, and it's creating a lot of challenges for communities just to be able to keep up the services to support the seniors and keep them healthy as well along the way. And so it's pretty interesting as we're starting to early, look at the data early on.
And as far as you can tell, as the state goes, so is going great, too?
Yes, including Grant County for sure. And if I may, just to follow your previous question, Dr. Bowen did a great job in explaining value-based reimbursement. I talked last time I was here, two months ago, about the fact that HMS is one of six FQACs in New Mexico that establish New Mexico Care Partners, which is a limited liability corporation, so that we could underneath that umbrella, start a clinically integrated network. And it's exactly what Dr. Bowen is talking about and we, this early phase of clinical integration and value-based reimbursement model is just for the Medicaid population. So it took our six hundred and fifty Medicaid recipients that come to see HMS to a hundred thousand across the state approximately, that we will work with the payers to again, do exactly what Dr. Bowen said, improve quality of care and reduce the cost of care overall. So again, we're taking a lead on that because there's a lot of good. The other piece of that equation is it's mandated in centennial care. Value-based reimbursement models is a mandate for us. So we have to be in this process by 2020, which we're ahead of the curve. And then the risk structure going from upside risk, downside risk, upside risk is going to shift. So it's going to get to the point where if we're not hitting those quality metrics, we'll get penwises, have to give money back to the MCOs. It's an interesting time in healthcare to keep up with that. So if there's any other questions, Mr. Chairman?
I have a clarifying question about the demographics also. So that's twelve years away.
Correct.
That is not very much time. So I'm curious to know how much of that demographic shift also has to do with the law. So you're talking about it proportional. So how much of that has to do with the loss of younger people, you know, people leaving the state? Do we know?
We don't know yet. That level of detail will definitely be in the report. It's going to be a conference.
And I know last year, for example, the state of New Mexico lost, you know, forty-four thousand people, population. So, you know, how much of this is driven by that loss of population?
Yeah, I can see where the distribution would absolutely shift with that factor as well.
Right, right. So the other question I have is, there's two really distinct populations of seniors in Grant County, the folks that have and the folks that don't. And one of the things that we do quite a bit in Grant County, in my experience, is rely on the seniors who have the help of the seniors who don't, volunteers, you know, donors to programs, you know, those kinds of things. And I think there's a, a lack of awareness, a general lack of awareness of how, how much stress there is in this community on seniors for very basic needs like, you know, enough to eat and, you know, those sort of things. Do we have any idea how much, have we looked at how much this population shift is going to impact that? You know, our low, is the low-income senior population going to rise and the, you know, upper-income senior population going to go down? Do we have any idea about that? Because that, it's not just services for seniors, but it's basic needs being met that are really going to put pressure on the system.
Absolutely. To answer that question directly, no, I don't know the answer to that quite yet. The process has been very comprehensive, everything from one-on-one interviews, two separate surveys are going out, not just to the seniors, they're going out to all of us, all the constituents in the community as well as family members that are taken care of, these individuals, business leaders, et cetera. We have a very large advisory committee, I've got just up to twenty people, that are contributing to the conversation and the dialogue regarding the barriers and the challenges now and moving into the future, based on the national data, the state data and our local data. Actually, I met with a researcher yesterday in the meeting and we were talking about all those variables. And we're already starting to talk about, you know, what recommendations are we going to make coming out of this for all the municipalities and the entire county and say, how do we respond to this? Because it's going to take all of us to address a really serious need. I mean, the corollary I want to think of is what's going on with addiction right now in our state, in our community. You know, we've had to put a lot of intentional resources towards that to address it and even make a significant dent on that. So I think it's going to look very similar with the senior population. And it has some long-term, you know, long-term negative implications if we don't get it right. So I'm glad we're taking a lead on it together, all of us as a community, to try to move in that direction to address it.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Being in this right now, I've been totally surprised at how many seniors are being taken care of by their family members. And this goes from, to take them to the doctors and specialty care, dialysis, you know, they can't be alone because there's really nothing available in the community that they can qualify for. So is there anything in the works to be able to provide services to seniors that need a higher level of care?
You know, some of the services are available, right? We have a local nursing home, we do have dialysis locally, but the example of how fragile it is, I don't know if you all heard, the nursing home has been around forever, I was going to say forever, I don't know how many years, in Hidalgo County is closing. And so you think about that small community and how fragile it is economically and now you think about the seniors and the population there, this is just going to shift things for them in a significant way. So I don't think I've asked you the question directly, but yes, there are services, just not adequate services. Skilled nursing facilities are difficult to come by and a lot of these seniors are having to go out of town to get those services. And now the family that's taking care of them to transport them to their local services, now they're going to try to get them to Las Cruces or Tucson or another area where they need to go. So, but I think that's what we're trying to bring to light through this study is where are the gaps and, you know, how do we work together to try to close those gaps? Because I remember meeting with Dr. Ski about four years ago and he was sharing with me how many of his patients, seniors, patients were moving out of the community just because they couldn't access services.
Well, I think that what that does is it leaves people behind that can't afford to leave the community. And so what you have is a disproportionate increase in people who need services who don't have access to them. And I just, I want to also point out that in addition to the seniors that are being taken care of, their families, we have, in Grant County have a significant population of seniors who have no one to take care of them. And I think that that is also something that we have to really be thinking about. There are, you know, the statistics on things like unattended deaths and that sort of thing all really shine a light on how many people in this community don't have access to services.
Very true. I just want to thank you and commend you guys for looking at certain things and for the services that you can provide for our surrounding towns and communities and recognizing that there still are gaps and we're putting out surveys and working on that. I think that's very commendable and understanding what our local communities are facing with and I'm glad that you guys are looking into that. I really appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity and we'll see you again in August, I believe, unless we need to consider it. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next slide on Monday, the view of June thirteenth, yeah, June thirteenth, June thirteenth, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, first I'd like to present a presentation to Sergeant Armando Donado for his wife's significant efforts for a woman in Las Cruces, the sheriff and nanny will both be in town on their separate day. So he'll be able to make that presentation.
We'll get the spelling right on the presentation.
In with her, yes, she's not, but directed the spelling here.
Appreciate it.
Moving on to new business, I am Dean, Grand County Trail Priority Interest Express by selected community business leaders and user groups. Marcy Demillion, with the National Park Service, will be here to present to you the findings of her survey. We should talk briefly about this, his report. Is there anything you want to add to that? Questions?
Hi, I'm Dean, Baton Park Pavilion, I have a quote. So we received two quotes back from Classic Industries, who is a design build firm. They were emailing, they're also in Novus, so you have two options in front of you. The first option we'll talk about is a grant total of $59,522.13. This is to make the exterior of the building ADA compliant versus use of the restroom, also replacing cooling as well as the seating, creating the ADA parking and all related access to the building. This quote, and then we continue to talk about drive-in versus walk-in, versus to be able to use the existing lane and drive up to the building. The second quote, in the amount of $116,742.52, is the walk-in version, which would require changing that ramp that we use as the drive-in to be able to make it ADA compliant for someone to access from the main parking lot to the building. So Lynn and I have looked at the current budget. We do have funds available to do, I don't call it option one, which is the drive-in option of $59,000 and change. Do not currently have money in the budget to do the drive-in, or the walk-in versions. This would, this would basically correct all the issues that we have with the quote building currently, heating, air conditioning, ADA compliant restrooms, as well as ADA accessibility to the building.
We don't have an argument on the, in new business on that, so would you be looking to a future meeting for us to direct you to issue an RFP one way or the other?
We don't have to issue an RFP, because this is a design build, we can go directly with this.
Oh, okay.
This would just say something, so you could take action to accept this quote on Thursday, or just approve it. And we can move on to another option, but that's the reason I chose for, to go that route, is so it would be a little quicker.
Thank you.
So the second, what is from Classic?
They're both from Classic. So you have a walk-in version versus a drive-in version.
And my, my question is, so we're going after the CDBG now, right? Would this pose any impairment to the grant?
No, actually it would not pose any impairment. Actually, it would probably be an advantage, because I could show this as additional leverage as far as money spent on the same type project, but it would not, necessarily, it would not impair it.
And probably there's a lot of points is the line more, as far as points for that, right?
It, it could, because, so you have the match, the cash match, which you can use, architectural engineers, any site testing, but then also part of the application is you have some additional leveraging. So any money that you spend above and beyond your 10% match is additional leveraging, so it shows that your benefit factor is better. The more money you can match it with, the higher the points you score.
Can you tell me what Gordian fees are?
Gordian fees are through CES, and no, I can't tell you much more than that, other than it's a pricing structure that they use specifically for design build, and anything you use through CES is based on a Gordian fee structure. So it's just a way of, it's a fee structure for contractors that they use. That's, that's a mixed opinion.
A related question would be, is it possible that the quote gets more expensive as a result of going through that Gordian fee structure?
It is possible. He did, he did add that on there, so hopefully it won't exceed this, because he did, if you look at the quote, you'll see that the Gordian fees are included in that, if I saw that somewhere.
Yeah, the part I remember is him saying, this might change.
And it could, and it could change like any project we do, even if we bid it out, it could change once we get in there, but I would hope that this is a solid figure. I don't guarantee.
Yeah.
So here, we talked about, this is a discussion, just a discussion. We talked about going local. So I realize why you went with build design, because that would save some time. In your experience, could we save some money and, and stay local? Or is design build being competitive with local contractors, or would you have difficulty getting bills from local contractors?
It depends on the project design, and this is just in my experience, not necessarily here. And in one project here, design build, turned out to not be a good option, because it was higher. I think based, this class, based on other small projects similar to this, it seems in line with what we would get from a local bidder. Some of our, what we did, two to three talks on that small project, usually a whole rate against the, typically anything small, whole rate construction is the only one that bids, like a low bidder. I haven't never asked until you put it out to bid, which we'll be looking at. By the time we, from this report, put the bid out, through the entire process, 40 minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Chairman, Commissioner Billings, I just want to point out that he is utilizing local subs, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay. He may be the general, but it is more costly competitive if he can utilize subs, local subs, so just like that.
Excuse me, that cooler is, there's only one cooler there? Excuse me.
So I've got a couple of clarifying questions. What's the propane for?
The propane is for the new heaters, you know, that was the most cost-effective route to go when I looked at propane versus gas, which would have to be run from the highway grid.
Correct. And currently, the electrical service is not large enough to support two electric heaters, and the cost to replace the electrical service was a lot compared to just bringing in two heaters and using propane.
But I don't see heaters on this bid.
To each liquid propane unit in bay area.
Oh, units, okay, okay, got it, got it.
The actual propane tank is not on here, but that's something we can absorb in our budget, that's not.
Gotcha, okay. So I just, I want the record to show that I am opposed to paying for cooling and heating in a building that has six bay doors in it that are not insulated. And I would like to propose that we don't do the heating and cooling in that building at this time, that the real issue there is the ADA compliance stuff, and that we look at the heating and cooling when we look at the CDBG project, with the possibility that we may change those bay doors. I just don't think that it's appropriate to spend $14,000 on heating and cooling a building that has six giant bay doors in it. Just a second.
Is something you consider, Thursday?
Yep.
I'm guessing you considered this, but what's the, I'm getting in the weeds here a little bit, what, what's the problem with the cooler that's there? Just age?
It's just, it's one swamp cooler and it's just goes back to the market, because we get, they pay to, to the building and it's hot and for the heater it's cold.
So we're replacing with another swamp cooler?
Well, master cooler is, is replaced on water.
Yeah, we're replacing one swamp cooler with another swamp cooler. What's wrong with the old swamp cooler?
Chairman, Commissioner Billings, it is just the age of the swamp cooler, it is just one of the older, non-efficient swamp coolers, and so we have a process. We asked the Red Cross Classic to look at upgrading that to a newer master pool that is higher efficiency compared to the swamp, because again, trying to put in the air condition, the return air is another requirement, so.
I understand Commissioner Edwards' comment about the heat, a swamp cooler actually works better when there's some ventilation. Usually you use a swamp cooler, you open some windows anyhow to let things in.
That is what you want.
Well, I understand that, but there's a big difference in opening some windows and opening six bay doors. And unless we have a way to control the use of it, so in other words, if people, you know, have all six bay doors open, if there's a way to control the swamp cooler being off during that time, then that's a different story. But if it's on because it's rented, and then people can open and close those doors at will, then we are heating and cooling the outside with taxpayer money, and I'm just, I, I have a serious issue with that. I understand that, you know, that heating and cooling is part of renting the building, but there are other options also for people to rent in the community. And so I think we need to stick to our original thing, which was to make sure that people had ADA access to that building, and look at the rest of the upgrades that we want to do as a, as a package.
And going along with Commissioner Edwards, the cooling is not as much of an issue as a heating. In the, in the wintertime, when we rent that and it's used, there is no way to provide heat. So, you know, that's, that's something to consider. And also, one of my questions was, if things can be adjusted, just like I see a, a need for a larger cement slab, you know, so if we get away with, say, the swamp cooler, can we extend the cement slab to be across the front of the building? So that we could provide, you know, access, both an entrance and, and a separate access or, or exit? So, I mean, I think there's some considerations that we could do there and we could discuss.
You know, I'm looking at, to me, this is a start. Eventually, it's going to have to be replaced anyway. And I understand, Commissioner, it's what Edwards concerned, but whether we go down the CDBG, I think this to us, to me, what I'm looking at is, it's a start to accomplish one of our goals. I mean, the complaints that we do get, and I'm not sure if the other community is, that again is, you know, we're renting it, it's cold, it's hot, it's this, it's that. If we're going to continue, I think that this is a step towards what we need to accomplish there. And yes, I mean, I totally understand the bay doors, I'm not sure what, you know, the ADA or what fire code or how many doors need to be opened, as far as being able to lock maybe a couple of the bay doors and maybe more inaccessible to, for them to open. I mean, we can look at different options, but for me, I think this is at least a start of where we need to go.
Thanks.
Where we need to head, being that there is money there, I think, I'm sure my opinion would be we should jump on it.
Uh, Mr. Beattie? Would fire code allow for all the bay doors to be locked?
No.
Would all of them?
I can't give you a definite answer on that, I'd have to start through the.
That sounds a pretty definite to me, no.
I mean, the problem is, you, you gotta have that exit, and it depends on the amount of people with the, how many exits you have. You look at this from the community exit, but it's a community at home, so that's the purpose, but you know, actually, I'm excited to call it out to the.
So could you, would it be possible to find out between now and Thursday, what the requirements would be on what's all but one bay door being locked, or, you know, could, could we find that out between now and Thursday?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Beattie.
Really agree with you.
That was pretty definitive also.
I'd just like to add that, with my recent experience with Baton Park, I'd hate for the Commission to get into micromanaging what people are going to do out there, because I, I understand your concerns, but we actually cooled the building by opening several of the bay doors, just bringing them up about a foot, created a nice breeze through there. The front, the front three were already open, and then it got a little bit windy and we shut the bay doors. There's some control there with those bay doors, and I'd hate for the Commission to get really technical. I think people are going to, if it's cold, they're going to do what's wise to keep it warm, which is not shutting the bay doors. If it's hot, they're going to do what's wise to keep it cool, within their ability to reason and know what that is.
Well, I think the, the bay doors, so I totally understand what you're saying about that, and I'm not necessarily talking about them being wide open, but I am talking about the fact that, you know, when you isolate your house, you seal your windows and doors, and those doors are not sealed. And we're talking about footing the bill for propane and electricity to run heating and cooling enough for people to be comfortable in a building that was not made for that.
That's a good question.
And so I have some, I have some serious concerns about what it's going to cost the county, not, not just putting these in, but what it's going to cost the county in the future to run them.
Are we currently heating the building?
That's the one I hear.
So you should have, with one heater, so you should have some idea what it costs now, is it, do we go, do you go on the whole every time you rent it in the winter, or do you know? Okay. Mr. Beattie?
Mr. Chairman, the heater that's in there now, with the capacity that it has, will not, it's not efficient for the wintertime, just put it that way. And when you look at the amount of people in there, because you get the bay doors open, you could have a whole bunch of people with the bay doors open that don't require a certain amount of occupancy with the doors shut. And then, of course, you're, you're not going to please, you know, 50% of the people want it hot and other people want it cold. So, but to answer your question, Commissioner Billings, is that the, the heating system in there now is not efficient for the winter.
And will the heating system be?
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure it will be. There's no sense, there's no sense in us going that route if we're not going to do it to be efficient, so I'm not, I'm not trying to be sarcastic. I mean, yes, it would, it would meet the requirements of the size of the facility.
So we warm the building up and then a little bit of the outdoors too?
Well, I, I do know that, I talked to Horace Camerino, and he was in charge of putting that building up, and the reason for the bay doors was so that you could avoid occupancy problems, issues. So once you open the bay doors, it, it no longer becomes an enclosed structure, so you don't have to follow occupancy, you know? As far as the heating and cooling, if, if you look at the electrical, the electrical there is, is at a, the voltage is 480, and they step it down to like industrial to 70. But there are other heaters that will, will, will take that voltage, you know, because what we're proposing is to go propane.
We're trying, you know, and I don't want to do this, but the building, the exhibit building now at Cliff has no heat, is that right?
That's correct, but because it's becoming a boiling place, we will have to install it.
Okay.
They could provide, bring them to do that?
Yeah.
We're talking about that giant building where we do food distribution?
Yeah, and there's 100 people and they're doing that food distribution and they're pretty well freezing in the weather. It's cold, I don't get cold easily. How much will that cost? Okay, never mind.
I can give you the price.
Sorry, I'm done.
Well, I'm done too.
Can you provide the distribution? No, but if I have to choose, I'll go ADA.
Yes, it is.
The law to agreements. I have consideration of agreement A 1918, Master Purchase License and Services Agreement with Colossus, here for this jail tracker for jail management, just some services at the Grand County Detention Center. with Colossus, here in this jail tracker for jail management system services at the Grand County Sentence Center. This was tabled from the last meeting. And I believe that having your dealer, like, first to work forward.
This is sort of the other piece to the in-carta agreement that you saw at our last meeting. This is all the software and the services related to the software. I don't know if Mike has any more to add. I mean, I don't know actually the details of how all these things work, but it's basically all the, the software and services related to how they track everything at the jail. Um, so this is the other piece to it.
As I recall, is replacing the system that is obsolete or...
I don't know if it's obsolete, because I know that Mike was written to move forward with this new stuff. I don't know if Mike, you wanna say anything about that? She was thinking that the previous software was obsolete, but I don't know if it was obsolete.
Explain why you wanted to move from X jails to this. Um, X jail is not obsolete, but you had reasons for looking at this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Williams, darling. The purpose of providing you with this agreement is our previous contractor, which is X jail, which is Securus, uh, it was, um, in that agreement and in that jail management system that, um, when I first came here almost six years ago, um, we've had a consistent issue with the services being provided by Securus. We've had some issues with the programming itself as far as, um, the system going down, having any kind of technical assistance and individuals, um, responding. Uh, we can't afford the detention center because our jail management system is our booking system. When it goes down, um, we can't afford to have any kind of lapse in time because then we have to go to a paper process in order for the entire booking jail management system. So, um, I continuously had some issues with their technical support, uh, which is in, I believe in Texas, either Houston or Dallas, I'm not sure which, I don't remember. Or maybe both. But anyway, their response was, um, was not the best. Um, when we asked them to fix the system or we asked them to make adjustments in the particular jail management system that we needed to make, um, we either didn't get a response or they just didn't do it. So, um, I started looking around, started asking some of the other facilities who managed their system. Um, I was able to be able to talk with the representatives from Jail Tracker. Uh, we have been, I have been meeting with them, they have been coming down, they have been putting on demonstrations. I have looked at the jail management system. Um, the reason that I would like for you to consider this system is because it, it is an upgrade, it is an improvement, um, it is a better recording and tracking jail management system. And the other thing that I liked about it is there's more options that we can include. We can build the system to our needs. Uh, we don't have to accept a system that's already been built for us because we know what, um, what we need at the jail. We know what issues that are represented with in our jail management system. We've, um, we've been looking at that. And I guess the one thing that I really, um, like about the Jail Tracker system is the accountability to, um, our employees and to the corrections officers when they're doing a, an actual booking. Um, we can, um, highlight areas or all areas that went on the entire booking process. And if at any time those, um, dropdowns, if you will, are, uh, are not filled in properly, they cannot, they cannot continue with the booking process. So it really eliminates a lot of mistakes or oversights, uh, in the booking process, which I think is really gonna help us a lot. And I just think it's an entire improved system. They'll come in, they'll archive all of our records, all of our previous records. They'll archive, archive all of those. So, um, I just ask for your consideration because I do believe it's, it'll be an improvement over this system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I had another question and, um, Harry and I were just having a little side conversation about this and neither one of us can clear exactly what this was. At the affiliates meeting, uh, we attended, um, a workshop about detention centers and what's happening around the state. And, um, there was some kind of integration that needed to happen between some state services, um, and detention center software in order to access some of these state services. Will this do that?
I can't answer your question. I don't know if it, if it will. I know that it's compatible with a lot of the services that are required by the state. But, um, as far as, um, if you're asking me if the system is gonna be, um, if they're gonna be a generalized system for all detention facilities, it's not like... There's a program, the name of which we cannot remember, that they, the Department of Health is supposed to be pushing out to counties. And they have a mandate to talk to all of us, but they haven't. At that time, they talked to like seven counties, right out of 33. Uh, but it's a program that, among other things, as I recall, helps, uh, transition folks out of detention and into services. Uh, but also, I believe, help pay for, uh, some, some costs when they're in detention. It sounded pure advantage and none of disadvantage. And the only catch that I recall was the software systems had to be compatible. Uh, but I don't remember what it was called.
So I gave you, like, I gave you that woman's card.
You gave me what, man?
I gave you the woman's card that we talked to about this program when I came back from that meeting.
We, we can do this outside of the meeting perhaps. Uh, but it would be, it would be important to me that if we're gonna spend money changing our software, that what we're getting be compatible with whatever it is we need.
Mr. Beattie, I, I think that that's something you can make that phone call and you can ask them and, and these other counties that you spoke with, you need to make that call between now and Thursday and have an answer for them as to whether or not they have the potential to bridge or interface with state, um, state programs, whether that's DOH, whether that's Department of Correction. Um, it's a simple interface, simple bridge. I think that you can have that question answered by Thursday if you do that, please.
I can do that for you.
That was a very big question, yeah. Because if you wanna spend money today, let's spend money tomorrow. If they do go with that system.
Yeah, on top of that, I didn't see a cost associated with this. And I went through the contract a couple times. Did I miss it or is that, is it already in the budget so it's not specified here? I don't know if there's a cost to this.
There is a cost.
That's different than what we were already paying.
Was it more or less? I don't remember your cost. It's, this is 1430 a month. That's roughly about the same as Securus.
Yeah, it's about the same as...
Right. So the difference is... Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think I just wanted to throw in that the previous agreement is also expiring. So we, we will definitely need to probably move forward with this one as we, even if it wasn't compatible. And then maybe down the road, uh, you know, look at the termination of the contract, not terminating it, but the expiration of the contract and try to align this issue with that because we can't go without this service. Does that make sense?
Yeah, totally.
Now we kinda, we have a timeline, we have to get a new one in there.
I understand that. Is there any way we could find out when this contract's gonna expire instead of if we have to... Because to me, this decision does not have to be made right away. If we have to table it, if the contract's not expired, where is the contract?
We need to make it. It is expired.
Why? This is the current one.
Not this, this one, but the current one that we are using is expiring.
That's what I'm...
It's just, it's just a month and a half, I think.
Well, can you give us an expiration date because I mean to...
Certainly, I probably have written on the office...
There's three things that I think that I would like to have in order next decision on Thursday. The statute of question that Sherman directed to, like, the expiration of this and a little word from you about how we get, how we, that if it wasn't compatible.
Well, and let me rephrase what I said. It's probably not compatible today, but many of these software companies, like even the financial software that we use, um, they are able to, and this is deep talk that is above my head.
They have to work around it.
But all they do is they create an interface that ties to whatever specific state agency that you need to interface with. I just wanna know is the capability of that interface with this there. But it's not necessarily going to be compatible today or next year.
That's semantic. We need to know on Thursday if this will work in the future. And so it's a workaround this, if they can say that, then, and interface, whatever, that's, that works for me.
Thanks for looking into that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Item G, consideration of agreement A 1924 between the State of New Mexico Department of Finance and Administration regarding the DWI grant agreement program.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
All right, so this, um, agreement has to do with, remember in February you approved, um, the distribution and my grant application to Department of Finance and Administration. And this is the contract for that agreement. Um, I applied initially for 105,000 in the grants. Um, you were approved for 95,000. So, meaning we had to slash 10,000 from Sunday. So there is only three categories in the grant agreement that we, we use. Payroll, um, the Corte Cantinas is in there, and then contractual for treatment services. So after much discussion, the plan has to version to slash the 10,000 from the treatment area only because many, many of our clients are Medicaid eligible now or so has been in recent years. And so those treatment services can be covered under Medicaid rather than just our, our grant. And so that seemed to be the best area to slash it from, versus Corte Cantinas, slashing 10,000 from, from that budget. And of course, my payroll services. Um, but know that also our, there was Senate Bill 413 that impacted our distribution amount also. Um, the distribution doesn't have a contract because that, each county gets that by law. And that doesn't have to have a contract. Um, but SB, Senate Bill 413, um, reduce, reduce the amount of taxes per gallon or per liter that, um, some breweries on a certain alcohol, and I can't remember which one it was, that greatly, greatly reduced it. Enough so that all counties in New Mexico where our budgets were reduced by about 5%, almost 6%, meaning we lost 9,000 dollars from our distribution funding also. So, um, we slash that of enforcement for now. Um, I will be, I have, I have that excess from this year that will be returned for next year. So we can decide where we're gonna put that. But that is what is on, what you will be hopefully approving on Thursday, is that grant contract that is effective July 1st. I understand for any questions? No?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item H, consideration of agreement A 1925 between the State of New Mexico Tourism Department and Grant County Commissioners Lodger Tax Committee for Marketing and Advertising Grant for fiscal year 2019-20. Lodger Tax Board applied for this grant as a cooperative marketing grant that they apply for each year. Um, they were awarded 23,466. Um, they were requested.
True ball.
Questions? Moving on to resolutions. Uh, item I, consideration of amendment to resolution R 1740, correcting designation of the polling places for the 2018-19 primary and general elections. I can tell you that item office.
Except that's related to the issue of heating and building out at the playgrounds? Is that, is that the same thing?
I think one of them may be designating the location of election day polling places, which is item L, I believe. But, um, she is not able to continue to use the school, especially with the new election code because elections may pop up that she may or may not have to. And because of the increased security at the schools and, and how that you, you access campuses, she requested to utilize this building as her polling location for the Colosseum of the Court. Those two things.
So should I wait for that item? Actually, I was gonna wait for her in any case on Thursday. But there are other options out there.
That was gonna be my question. There would be a place...
And my question would be, is that gonna change our use of San Lorenzo as a polling place? If it's...
Right, you would think about it the same thing?
I can't answer any of those. She just approached us, said we were all about that and...
It might have different security policies that make San Lorenzo still okay, but Cliff not.
Can I ask those questions on Thursday? Or before, yes?
Yeah, right?
So I'll move on to item J, consideration of resolution R 1936, authorizing and acknowledging the terms and conditions of a grant agreement lying between Grant County, New Mexico and New Mexico counties for the 2018-2020 Community Wildlife Protection Plan, Wildfire Risk Reduction Grant Program. Randy and Lisa both already talked about this, this is the ramps for 15,000 dollars to update the plan. Um, item K, consideration of resolution R 1937, establishing new precincts in Grant County. Can I answer anything with this in there?
Mr. Chairman, just that, I, I'm familiar with this in the past and I've reviewed the current ones just to match up with the statutes. It's all, it's all legal, but I don't have another reasoning behind what you're just...
And next, item L, consideration of resolution R 1938, designation of the location of election day polling places for all statewide elections conducted in 2020 and 2021, appointing the Board of Registration Members to the county. This is where you wanted to add something, Commissioner.
Good idea.
Regardless of location, you said there's other locations other than that.
Well, yeah, but I was gonna add, okay, I'm, I'm just picking up the discussion. I don't know the area as well and what would be an appropriate location for polling. Uh, but there's, for example, the seniors, senior citizen center in Gila, not Cliff. And you're shaking your head.
Because Triple A, because of the regulations around funding with senior centers is to be used for senior purposes only. They strongly just, no, we can't use it for community meetings, we can't use it as polling locations, we can't.
What if it helps seniors burn?
Well, it, it's just the regulations that come along with the funding that it is for seniors, it's for senior meal site, it's for, they're very specific. And we had to cut out a lot of extra activities that were happening at the senior centers in regards to the rules and regulations that come along with that money. So I don't believe that's an option, but I can make a phone call and ask. But I don't believe...
I don't know if it's your job or if it's Marissa's, but...
Let us, it wouldn't have the contact for Triple A and I'm, I'm, they won't let us do a lot of other things. And especially they did, I mean, I understand where you're going with that, but I don't believe that they're going to allow us to use a senior meal site for a polling location.
So they would potentially allow that if the polling didn't have to start at 7:00 AM and lasted until 7:00 PM? So, so the, the, technically, the center could only be used for senior-related things during their open hours. So either eight or nine o'clock in the morning when they open this, start the meal until it's done. So it couldn't be used for polling during that time. And so if your polling hours are 7:00 to 7:00, then you violate that regulation.
That's what I'm...
See, but I was also thinking about fire stations. And maybe the fire station could be used as a polling place.
Well, what about the community building?
Um, the community building has its own set of issues regarding code that we shouldn't actually be using. Um, and it's tiny.
Is that the point?
It's totally...
Yeah, that's the point, yeah.
It's not happy, half accessible either.
That's true.
And the fire station, you want to add it to, why they just got, do you ever think of that?
Well, I, I don't know, I have to check with the chief, but, I mean, obviously, it's, it's a fire accident. So if that can be, if activity breaks out of the fire, then, you know, you're gonna have an issue there. Um, I can't, I can't recover that that has some of the compliance issues going as well with that. Um, I think it does, so that might be an issue as well. Um, parking would probably be another issue, um, because it, you know, the parking area you start blocking fire trucks and rolling those and having to move them. So logistically, it would be an issue.
Okay, how about a conversation? That, because, you know, I'm thinking about the heating that, don't they?
I'm trying to think of that quote, um, I wanna think it was five or $6,000. It wasn't like 10...
So they're gonna have to all stand around... So they're going to have to all stand around and camp fire?
No, it's actually, the difference in that building is it's very well insulated, it was built for people. It's insulated, it actually stays fairly cool in the summer months, just as, you know, they do crack the doors, they, I'm just saying, it's insulated, and you don't see gaps of air like you do within the pavilions, there's a little bit of a difference, so...
No, but if, Randy alluded to ADA, is it ADA compliant?
There are ADA parking spaces, I did look at that, because that appeared to me, I did look at that, there are identified ADA parking spaces, but that's my business to look at, she's the one that requested us to use this building, we moved forward trying to accommodate her request to use this, and she's the one that asked to determine whether or not it meets those requirements for her to use it as a polling location, so that would be a question for her authority. I can recall off the top of my head whether there are...
Well, as far as the heating issues in that building out there, you know, when people start using the heat, I guess management can look at that bill and add some onto the rental if you promise to rent it, not use the heat for winter vans or whatever. I know on dance out there, I create my own heat, so I don't completely want to heat in that building, it's gonna, it'll be so hot on the build of dance. So I think management can hopefully handle that. You know, the food distribution service, and some of those people really like heat a few days, but...
They would.
The cost of paying for it, you know, and...
They're actually very good tenants.
Okay, good.
Okay, item M, consideration of resolution R 1939, a resolution to enter into a cooperative agreement between the County of Grant and New Mexico DOT for Project CHAP, year 2019-20, to pass roadways overlay, lay single penetration chips, and drain children, improvements, and striking roads within Grant County. Total amount is $198,245, it's a 75-25% split, 75% comes from DOT, 25% from the county, and we utilize in time labor and equipment for that. Want to chime in on what you're doing about?
Yeah, just to be the regular rotation for chip seal jobs, I did warn the warranty on that resolution and on resolution O, those were based on the funding that I got last year, and that's what they told me to use, and as you know, our funding got cut this year, so we're looking at again next year, cutting probably five miles of road down this, unless the oil prices go back down. On there, I did want to leave all the road down there, so when next year rolls around, I can go work, it will kick whatever is the worst ones, to be able to spend this money and do, and we will look at, probably have to cut five miles of road again, unless oil prices go back down. And I don't know that until April of next year.
So what I don't understand is, I'm telling you, running for that, I mean, there's always discussions about economic, who is this, retirement communities, and which one of the first things that people see when they come into a community is the roads, but...
We're hoping, I said, we're hoping if we get, you know, the money for Hurley over there, it's one of the roads that was on there, reserves, if we do get the money, if we get it, that's going to help out a lot with Commissioner Brown, and wanting to look at widening Ridge Road out, or looking maybe taking that money off of there and putting it someplace else also, and then figure out something, what have to do, what have to be something different to chip seal to widen that road out. There's things that I'm looking at, like I said, what's going to control it, probably the oil prices.
So the money that's being cut, that's maintenance money, right? Not construction and widening a roadway to provide safety for bringing things to landfill or the detention center, wouldn't that be new construction money?
Well, yeah, as I said, I don't know what to do for funding sources, but if I can't find any, I'm going to have to use the LDRF to do, I just have to get creative, there might be, have to be something done in two phases.
And I don't follow this that closely, but I feel like I've seen headlines about the state having more money for new construction of roads, not less.
I don't know what to do with that money, I mean, if you even look at our town between Dune and Cruz, if they tell me it's all the way to state line, that's the worst I've seen that in the state.
Yeah, it's bad, it's real bad.
So that's perplexing to all of us, because we were expecting to have more money, that was the discussion, the entire session, there's more money, there's more money, and then there ended up being less money, and we're looking at less money next year, so it doesn't really make a lot of sense. I've had conversations with Senator Ross and Representative Dow, just very informal, but I think we can take a look at that, and maybe a lot of that little part in the future. But $50 million, I don't know if that's the two projects that we applied for, I don't know if that's their extra money, and they're trying to look at different construction projects, but there's really no logical explanation as to why we received the cuts we did to LDRF. Item N, consideration of resolution R 1940, a resolution to enter into a cooperative agreement between the County of Grant and New Mexico DOT for Project SP, year 2019-20, stands on 85 to fat bridge.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, this is just, after getting it engineered and everything, we realized we're going to have enough money, so I had to ask for more money to complete this project. I'm still looking to try and get that thing done this fall, Stamp Text working on the engineering part of it, and when they get 60% complete, they're supposed to get ahold of me and take a look at it, once you get it, it'll go pretty fast.
And this is a project, Commissioner Bellings District, is that right down past Tauron?
Uh, south of the original, it's a taron access, it was over towards the line, the DOT D that bridges unsafe, or I just actually got another report on it this morning, and we have to get something done on it, I think.
And we actually have that on our project list, if we come up short with DOT monies to supplement whatever we need, because it is deemed unsafe, is also on our project list, because we know we have to get it done before they come in.
We're almost to that point, I've been put in the box, but I did have a report this morning, and I did respond to it, it's in the process of getting something out of the box. I have already built a deter, a deter is closed up right now, but I did build a deter over there in case something happens, they do close it off, we'll have something there to get people in and out, it will be very usable for trucks, people will be able to get in and out, basically the safety issue.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for taking the initiative to do the...
Yeah, yeah, appreciate that.
Item O, consideration of resolution R 1941, a resolution to enter into a cooperative agreement between the County of Grant and New Mexico DOT for Project SP, Project 2019-20, to pass roadways, lay single penetration chips, and drain children, improvements, and striking roads within Grant County. SP does stand for school bus, so these are all school bus routes.
It is, it's got a part of their road, longer, it's used for the funding than we had last year, so there'll be roads that have to be cut off there, the oil, the oil prices go down, everything on the country now, they're staying, oil prices are starting to go down, the block ends at that, that price right now is what I'm thinking.
Item E, consideration of resolution R 1942, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Grant County, New Mexico, authorizing the submission of a New Mexico Community Development Block Grant Program, application to the Department of Finance and Administration, local government division, and authorizing the Commission Chair to act as the county's chief executive officer, and authorize representative in all matters pertaining to the county's participation in the Community Development Block Grant Program. All of that to say that this authorizes the submission of a CBG grant application, and authorizes the chair to be able to sign all documents related to that application. I held two public hearings as required for the grant process yesterday, I had two people show up for the morning, one of those being our assessor, and I had one show up for the afternoon, and that was Commissioner Edwards, not a lot of turnout. So projects that were identified, supportive housing, Christina offered with spend in her project, and also roads, astrobottography project, which I don't think would qualify, and we talked about this, I don't think that would qualify under CBG ground, it's more for infrastructure type, but I told him we could definitely look at a planning grant application in the future to get started, I was looking up a study and the feasibility of moving a project like that forward, I think it's a great idea, and we can certainly look at other funding sources, but we could look at a planning grant later on. I was asked if there was any other projects being discussed, I did mention the sound part, because there was no one else there to mention it, so I did mention that we had had those discussions, and so that was the extent of those. Looking back, there was a joint public hearing that was a post-project public hearing in One Hill in January, and there was one person showed up for that as well, mainly he just looked at the zone, he just asked some questions about, he was trying to educate himself about what CBG was, so nothing really came out of that hearing either. So we have now met our obligation for pre-project selection public hearings, based on your decision on Thursday to approve this resolution or not, we will host another public hearing on Friday morning that is a post-project selection public hearing, stating that this is a project you chose, and I'll have to explain why you chose that project. So...
Good.
Unless you have any questions. Item Q, consideration of resolution R 1943, declaring an emergency and requesting emergency funding for the Hanover Mutual Domestic Water Consumer Association. Approximately a week ago, the Hanover Water Association had trouble with, their wells went down. The county has stepped in and helped them in the past, you know, Hanover's not an incorporated municipality, they're part of the county, the water association has very limited resources. We've helped them in the past, this is a similar effort to help them through this. We did rent a generator to get one of their wells up and running so that they can fill their tanks, they did tap into, they have an emergency allotment that comes from the city of Baird, but that's capped, so they did utilize some of that. So what this resolution does is declares an emergency and allows them to apply for emergency NMFA funding for water issues such as this. It's just a resolution saying, yes, there's a problem, we would like for them to receive any possible emergency funding to rectify the problems that they're having.
So they're, so they have an inverter problem, right? Or they have some piece of equipment that needs to be made in order to work, and this resolution would give them the authority to go to the NMFA, say it's an emergency, get this done, so they can shorten the process of getting the funding from NMFA to do it, and what we're going to do in the meantime is pay for the generator to keep the tanks filled, right?
That's correct, and where they, when I talk about their limited resources, in order for them to fix this problem, it depletes their entire amount of reserves, so they're looking for this emergency funding so that they don't have to deplete their reserves, so they can continue to operate until they receive more funding, so...
What is the typical turnaround time on an emergency request to NMFA? Are they pretty quick, just, you know, the state, as we know, can be abominably slow on stuff? Do they turn around quick?
Mary Ellen's coming in.
Sorry.
I can't answer, it was...
I asked how quick NMFA would get that money to you.
I can't answer that question, I am not familiar with the program, I don't. Is there any other comments or questions on that resolution? Next, section bids and requests for proposals, item R, award reject RFP 1905 Airport Engineering Services. Is that what you're here for, Randy? You want to talk about it?
In your packet, you have a letter of recommendation for myself regarding an RFP that we put out for Airport Engineering Services. We had two firms submit a proposal to us, one being Armstrong Consultants, and the other, Bohannon and Houston. As you can see, they scored fairly close, but Bohannon and Houston came above, just based off of past experience and their work with the county, so this is for your award or rejection on Thursday. Do you have any questions?
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Commissioner Ross, Commissioner Brown, your report.
You know, it's less a report than a public apology, and I'm apologizing to our county attorney, because I contributed to leaving an impression, and this was brought to my attention by a number of people, that there was an issue, that we were dissatisfied, and that's what led to the resignation. When we accepted your resignation, I think there was silence out here, and I, for one, wasn't quick-witted enough to thank you for your service, and to, I tell you, I've really appreciated everything you've done, I've really enjoyed coming into your office and talking, actually, I love talking law, and I have enjoyed doing that, and I've found you very helpful to me, and so I'm apologizing for not having made that statement at the time, I was fully focused on what we were going to do next, and I apologize for that oversight. Other than that, I have no report. Thank you, Abby.
Much like you.
Well, I didn't have a report until you said that, and I'm just like, wow, I never thought of that either, so my apologies for being even more asleep than Harry was on that day, and yeah, I would just reiterate that absolutely you've put an asset in the county, and so helpful to me as a commissioner, thank you very much.
Commissioner Ross?
Well, I also want to mirror what Commissioner said, and I've talked to Abby personally, so, but there is another issue that I wanted just to bring up as a topic of discussion, because I had a phone call that told us that we were trucking some water to the arena, and the person asked me if we should be doing that. So I don't know if that's something we just talked to our county manager, or if that's something, a policy, that we need to address, because I can see where, if we're doing services for one group, then another group might come and say, well, I want you to utilize your equipment to create a parking lot, to help us do some balance, something like that, so I wanted to open it up for whatever you guys thought.
Mr. Chairman, I can explain why it's being done, it's not for a specific group, it's because it's a county facility, and in order for someone to utilize that facility, it's dirt, it's hard, in order for someone to utilize that facility for the downstream event, which is what it was reserved for, if there is no moisture in the ground, I have asked the road department to haul water, when he is available to, to wet the ground. We do, we don't do anything beyond that, that person, if they need additional water, they use sprinklers, they use water hoses, they also have to hire someone or use their own equipment to till the ground to be able to utilize it, it's part of preparing a facility for someone to use, just like if we rent the pavilion that we have trash bags, and the floor is clean, it's part of having a facility prepped or able for someone to use. If we want to discontinue this, then I can tell you that it won't be used in the future.
Well, as I said, we were talking about...
It's the county arena that's located on the Fairgrounds property, it's rented from time to time in Cliff. It is rented from time to time, there is an individual that rents it and hosts a series of breweries, that's what it's being used for. I looked at it as it was part of the county having the facility able to be used, I didn't look at it from, is it for a particular group, it went our, who it was that wanted to use it. it. That was, that was the logic behind it. However, like I told Commissioner Solis, if that's an issue with the board, please direct me, and I won't do otherwise, but I would expect you to receive some phone calls from the constituents out there that utilize it just like other facilities are being utilized for in other.
So do we have, uh, I don't know if policy is really the right word, they're looking for here, but a set of directives or an outline of what we are going to do? So we have county facilities that we rent, and those facilities are things like Baton Park, the facilities out of Clifula, the convention center, that sort of thing. So they all take a certain amount of prep in order to make them ready for the rental, correct?
Correct.
So do we have a set of directives or policies that identify what that is for each of those facilities that we follow?
The, obviously, the conference center is a little bit of a different beast, and yes, it's very clear what you get whenever you rent that. For the rest of our facilities, those agreements and those expectations of what you expect are, in my opinion, a little bit, and probably need to be reworked to where you specify that, yes, you are gonna, you're gonna find a clean facility with, you know, adequate cleaning supplies, trash cans, chairs.
And some cooling.
Yes. So for, or basically for those facilities, the only other two, I mean, we have the conference center, which has a very detailed set of policies, but the other two facilities, so you use Baton Park and the fairgrounds, they're a little vague, in my opinion, and they don't really spell out what we will do or what we won't do for those. But, as I said, it was just an effort to make it to where it could possibly be used for someone.
And we rented this, we rented the arena, that's why we watered it?
I feel like, Commissioner Solis, you've had this explanation, it sounds like, manager, but since you mentioned some of these things to you, is there something in your mind that makes this an unusual situation? Normally, I wouldn't wanna get into these kind of details of county operations unless we think there's malfeasance going on.
Well, it's not the issue of malfeasance, what the person mentioned to me was, you know, the use of county equipment. So if it was, the use of county equipment was gonna be made available for other things, you know?
But it's being, there's no sense it's being used on, for private interest, right? The county equipment's not being used to maintain someone's personal house, or grounds, or anything like that, right? Because I think we use county equipment on county facilities all the time, I'm curious what's different about this.
Well, basically, because it was the hauling of water, and with water already being there. And also, they asked me, well, does the rental of the facility cover the cost of what it costs us to put water out there? Certainly, we sent a truck from here over there, and it probably made various trips.
Well, that's a reasonable question.
I can just point out a little, the water is actually donated by the general one out there, we're not hauling water from Silver City to Cliff and making multiple trips, we're making one trip, is the, Mr. Vickersen's a quarter mile, maybe?
Yeah.
So the water's donated, it's one trip out there. My other thought behind it, too, we continually get deemed by the union that we don't provide any training for truck drivers. We were utilizing this as a training opportunity to get them on a truck as well, but it's, we're not hauling water from Silver City.
No, but we're utilizing.
We're utilizing county equipment, we're using county equipment on a county facility.
But it has a rental agreement. It has a rental agreement.
But does it cover the cost? I have no idea, but, you know, I'm not part of, and as I've been thinking about this, and what the expectations are, we're probably gonna have to look at increasing the rental rates on all of our facilities. I know the conference center is working, but the other two, perhaps, those rental rates are going to have to come up as well, looking at, you know, really doing a cost analysis of whether or not we're making any money or not. But I don't know what it costs to make one trip.
You know, that, sorry, that, you know, we went back to, and I know this is a wrong position, it's just, I think it would be a great idea for us to really look at, oh, we're gonna adopt places for, we need to look at, you know, what costs are associated with the rent team as far as cleanup, bags, you know, water, whatever it may be, because, you know, looking at, yeah, what we're trying to do with Tom Park, we're trying to get an idea for time, you know, the discussion about the heater, the cooler, you know, maybe there's time for us to go visit, to recruit some of that, and then to do it that way, but to recruit some of that cost.
That's our guess.
Some of this, some of these things, because Commissioner Edwards brought up a valid point, you know, Commissioner Solis brought up a valid point, you know, if the water being donated, you know, we're good with that, but, you know, there's still, there's many hours we're paying somebody, there's still the equipment, gas, maintenance equipment, I'm not gonna get into that, but, you know, we really need to look at, down the road, look at our rental commitments, what should we learn, what shouldn't we learn.
Kevin and I are gonna start working on that, we're gonna be looking at other counties that rent somewhere type facilities, looking, we'll be requesting some policies, taking a look at that, trying the best we can, we'll work with Jason and Earl as far as, you know, what the costs of those services are, and make sure that we are covering, because I'm sure that we're not covering all of our expenses, that's just a guess on my part, but there is a very.
And word perception, you know, what people perceive, what they, you know, do bring up concerns, it's a big word, and I think if we take the opportunity to define what we're gonna do, go from there, I think it could help with some of that perception, because, I mean, I've said, hearing this, you know, I have probably seen questions, Commissioner Solis had, is, hey, what are we doing here? I'm being very consistent, I'm doing that, but, you know, that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Well, I think sometimes we're not gonna recoup our costs, but still, I like your idea of plan, and I think we need to have some questions answered to make a good decision. Sometimes it might come down to the ratio of dollars spent for people served.
Mm-hmm.
So you mentioned, originally said something about an individual renting, which raised a red flag, but then you said it's for an event, so that relieved my mind some. So it looks like some people are, it's not just an individual's group using it. Still, I think we need more information, and I like the idea of a plan looking at all the facilities.
Well, I don't know that we can get into a cost per, because how would I ever know how many people are going to use the baseball field.
No, and I mean that technically, I mean, we're gonna have to shoot, we're gonna have to shoot from the hip on that, but when you're renting a facility for, I don't know, I'm just thinking 200 people show up, or 100 show up at an event, it's X amount of dollars, you can just kinda shoot from the hip, and though, if a dozen people were renting an event, then it's costing the county a lot of money, I just, I don't know. Like I said, just shoot from the hip and realize, hmm, we're spending a lot of money serving a few people, and I'm not suggesting that's the case here, I just, I don't have much information to know.
Well, I think we have to really look at, you're right, I mean, we're gonna be shooting from the hip, we're not gonna be like, okay, well, if we rent a table, there're gonna need three water trucks together, but, but I think we can, you know, like the heating, cooling, things, trash bags, I think we can get a good idea of what, where we may have to be and go from that. It's gonna be hard to put an actual price on this.
You know, it's gonna be an end of the clarity issue, because, you know, I certainly don't mind battery being used for activity that is, is in that environment. I mean, you're gonna go out to that area, horse riding, barrel racing, and that's, that's part of what they do, and it's gonna be, you know, like a quality life thing. But if we're gonna do it up there, let's have a policy for, as Chris was saying, let's just review it, and this gives an opportunity to do that. That's good.
I can just comment on the, the idea that, you know, there is a rental fee, whether there's one or 100 people there, it doesn't have anything to do with the people, it has to do with the facility.
Sure.
And so it doesn't matter how many people ride where we know, or hang out, or whatever, it's a facility rental, and there are certain things that we need to do in order for that facility to be ready for whatever activity that facility is appropriate for. And so water on the ground of the arena and cliff is different than whatever we'd be doing at Baton Park to make sure that it's ready. The key is, it's a facility, and there are a certain minimum number of things that have to be done in order for that facility to be rental, whether it's water or.
And I think that's where breaking each individual facility and what it brings to it is, is probably something we can look at.
Well, I would just remind us, we really had a lot of conversation about this, when we figured out what the fees were gonna be, and the policies were gonna be for the conference center.
Yep, same idea.
Same idea.
You know, and I brought it up because I didn't know, this is just something with the missus with the county manager, and look at it, or this would entail some kind of a policy?
I would just say that I think this is the kind of thing that, in my opinion, is the county manager's job in terms of, you know, we have some, some constituent broader concern to me, we need to evaluate this, and then have the county manager bring us the results.
And I think, and I think the county manager, just, again, you know, I just want to be correct, I mean, thank you.
I think it's great.
Did you, did you also?
No.
I'm fine.
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Um, wow, I got sidetracked there, but, thank you for your services, I appreciate it, and same with the two commissioners, we overlooked that last meeting, but thank you for everything that you've done, and I know with the two commissioners, we've been here, what month is it, two or six months, maybe, but we have been a great help, we really, we really appreciate it, thank you. That's all I have, five and four. So, I got these, we're supposed to get down on time, but.
Hey, it's not doing yet. It's a work session.
It's a work session.
It's a work session, Thursday, Tuesday, we're gonna go.
Black through.
Set for the county first class.
See, I'm trying to keep it at this point, so I don't want to show we don't start now.
Is this executive session necessary today?
Well, I'm looking at.
I haven't switched back yet.
Phew, it's a born man, he did it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, I know that we go into an executive session in accordance with.
So you're doing the same thing I did.
That's Thursday.
That's Thursday. Oh, I know the way to jerk.